Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Here.
Counselor Angeloni?
Here.
Counselor Caprio?
Here.
Counselor Diamond?
Here.
Counselor Patterson?
Here.
Counselor Vaughn? Counselor Fucie?
Here.
Counselor Rose?
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the June 3, 2014 WPCA Town Council meeting?
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Fucie?
Yes.
Regular Town Council meeting. Item 3, Reports of Committees, Boards, and Commissions. Item A, Permanent Project Building Committee.
Permanent project met last week, and as far as the STW Community Center goes, we approved the lighting, which is for 10 new light poles, and the business in North Branford, Penn Globe, we cannot buy from them directly. We had to go through one of their distributors, and the distributors, the people that bid on the lights will be using the Penn Globe. And so, they're going through that process right now. It's roughly the same cost as what Penn Globe was giving, had estimated for us. So, that work, Public Works, will be doing the underground work as far as the layout and everything. As soon as that is done, and then Franny can get us on the Tilkon schedule. You know, all this work is hopefully going to be done this summer, the lighting and paving. And the high school roof project is scheduled to go, so that it starts the day after school is out. They've already done some preliminary work in there, and they've been working after school is out, and they'll be ready to go the day after school is out.
Great. All right, thank you. Economic Development Commission?
Yeah, nothing to report there. It was reported at the last meeting, yeah.
BOE Town Council Communications Subcommittee.
That committee met also last week. We talked about the security grant, when the next round of funding is approved by Governor Malloy. Kim Newbig will be the point person on that for the Board of Ed in submitting that application. We also discussed with them, told them that we are looking into self-insurance, and we'll get more information on that come October. This year, it's still going to be the way the plan is, but then the insurance company will come in with, to us and look at that. And we also talked about the capital projects, which are later on in our project, as far as the school track, the bathroom, the unit ventilators, and the science rooms. And that was it.
We touched upon the IT a little bit, the joint IT background.
Right.
But, that's still work in progress, I think. The joint IT.
Absolutely. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add item 3D, the Potato and Corn Festival.
I'll second it.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fucie. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Fucie?
Yes.
Okay. I went to the Potato and Corn Festival meeting last night. Things are pretty well underway. Roseanne Kudusky is the person that has been hired to head up the festival this year and be the point person. And, just to let you know, the cooker is, the parts were ordered. It has been fixed. Public Works fixed the cooker. Good To Go is giving a $1,500 donation towards the festival. They charge $1,000 a day for rental, but then they're giving a $1,500 donation, so that nets out $2,500. But, it was less the cost of the parts, and the parts came in at roughly $1,450 for the parts. Public Works fixed it, and they're not charging labor to fix the cooker, but now they'll also have some spare parts for the machine. So, they'll end up paying roughly a little over $1,000 for the rentals of the cooker for this year's festival. And then Good To Go is also making the donation for it. Some ideas that they have tossed around, because it is a four-night festival, is that they are thinking of making Thursday night North Branford night to, as an incentive for people to come with different events happening. They may include free parking for North Branford residents that night, and have some other incentives to draw more people to the festival for that fourth night. So, we're hoping for good weather. The other issue that came up, and I'm not sure if we'll be able to address anything for this year, is the aid commission for the last number of years has been doing the tractor pull on Saturday. Now, it's, they're understanding that there's an outside company that runs the tractor pull and awards the prizes, and, you know, handles the actual tractor pull. The question came out as to whether they're a vendor, and they need to have their own insurance, or if they fall under the town's insurance policy. So, I'm not sure if that's something that can be looked into, if we need to rectify that for this year, or if it's something we put into the notes, so that moving forward after this year, we can look at that. The second issue was the, the aid commission also does hayrides, and they charge a dollar a person for the hayride, and we're not exactly sure where that money goes. And, the festival, especially with having a point person this year as the coordinator and everything, and she's responsible for all revenue coming in and all expenses paid out, is what happens to that money. We have no idea how much that money, how much that has generated in the past, and if the money has been used for other aid commission activities throughout the year, if they took that money and did it for them, I'm not sure what happened to it. So, that is something that we need to look into. And if it's the pleasure of the council, then that any money collected from the hayride or the tractor pull that would normally go to the aid commission, that we set that aside in our funds, so that we have funds to do things for the aid commission, I think that's a more appropriate way to do it, so that the income stream is, is all consistent along the way, and you don't start having groups keeping their own, keeping the money, because it's all under the auspices of the festival. So, that is something that we need to look at and kind of give direction as to how this.
Yeah, Cliff, I'll let it come up.
Okay.
I can answer a lot of these questions. I didn't make the meeting last night. First of all, the club, it's not a vendor. It's a club that runs the tractor pulls, and they run it around Connecticut area, not just here. And it's strictly a club. They just, if Al was here, he could tell you. They just did a pull at Adams Farm the other day. And they do it for friendly competition in points. So, they're really not a vendor. They're not out to make money. They're out to put on an agricultural display tractor pull. Richard, and I don't have one in this panel, but what we did for insurance purposes, because this was a question when we first tried to get them going, there's a waiver sheet that they sign every time they come on our town property and pull. And it's not just under the auspices of the town, I mean, of the Potato Fest. We happen to have a pull on Saturday's Potato Fest. There's going to be a pull a week before that on the farm grounds as well, and there's going to be another one in October. So, that's, I don't know how you want to really consider it a vendor for that one event. They do it as a service to our town. It helps us promote the agricultural theme in town. It's a good time in town. So, they're really not a vendor. I don't know how you get that impression, and I'm sorry when they explained it last night. Now, as far as like the hayride, the funds are not go back into a slush fund we have, because the sled's got to be repaired soon. If you notice, if you're there at the pulls, the sled is getting thin from running up and down on the dirt. We also rent our own porta potties, because we were very embarrassed at one of the pulls. The, we were going to just kind of use the ones that were at the ball fields. They were disgusting. And we have women that pull on these tractor pulls, so we have to rent porta potties. So, there are expenses that we, and we're going to also have food, and we're going to subsidize the food people. I'm working right now with a couple people from the fire department, because the pullers don't want to leave the prem, because they want to see how they pulled, and then in turn, they want to see how their competition pulls. I'm working with Steve Torino out of Company Three. So, we're going to help them pay for some of their food expenses too. So, the money we make, we put right back into the farm and into the pulls and into porta potties, expenses, because we know we're going to have to rewood the sled soon, and that's going to be pretty expensive.
But, see, the aid commission has a line item in our budget. So, I don't, in the towns, in the towns thing, there is a line item with money that the town allocates to the aid commission. So, I'm not so sure that you can have your own slush fund. I guess this is a question for John.
Well, if we're not, see, we're separate. We are separate from the aid commission. We're a pulling club under the auspices of the, we're not part of the aid commission. We're volunteers that are running this pull. I'm not on the aid commission anymore. So, I mean, to associate it fully with the aid commission, it's just an agricultural theme that we're trying to get across. We're trying to keep the North Branford farming theme going.
So, who's getting the money, the club or the aid commission?
The club to put back into a fund to keep the pulls running. We, we need funds for the expenses we have. So, again, and like I say, the insurance. Richard and I, we sat down, we wrote up a big form. The form shows that these drivers are pulling it, because it is public property. And also, there is a blanket insurance policy on the whole town, on the whole area that day. But, this is over and above that. So, again, it's just, it's just to promote the agricultural theme. I don't know how else, and we do it.
No, 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 I understand that. I don't have a, I don't have any problem with that. It's just, it's just, these are things that have come up, and the, you know, the money that is raised and everything.
At the Potato Fest, yes. And it's only a dollar we charge for the hayride, and that goes back into, like I say, a fund, so we can support the fuels and stuff for the tractor. And, you know, we just, it's just to keep things running. Otherwise, we could only do it once or twice, and we'd have to say, well, you can't come anymore, because we can't afford the porta potties, or we can't afford the food. It's just to regenerate funds to keep the tractor pulls going. It's not a direct agriculture commission operation, we as volunteers. Because I'm off the commission, but I'm helping run the tractor pull.
I'm still confused on that.
So.
Well, it's, the insurance part, you know, and I guess that's something Michael will have to look at, is whatever this waiver is, because I'm not exactly sure what that is. And I'm sure that's.
It's a sheet that I believe, I don't know, were you involved, John, at all? Did you have to see the form?
I, I may have, if they.
Okay. But, that's.
Oh, yeah, Richard was still here, because we realized being public property, we had to do something possibly different. And that's why we don't allow the big, heavy-duty VA tractors. They have to be old farm tractors. Slow, strong.
But, the porta potties at, because it is town property, and there are events that are held there, I think that is something that we as a council need to look at, because I'm, I'm not exactly sure that the aid commission or, I mean, it could come out of the aid commission's budget.
It doesn't come out of their budget. That's.
I know, but I'm saying, this is going forward, Cliff. Listen, going forward, we can do this, because we already have our budget set. But, instead of you having to collect money to do this, that this is an area that the council could look at to have porta, because we have porta potties for the Potato Fest there that are all rented and everything for that.
But, see, this is where Roseanne gets confused too, because only, everybody only thinks about the Potato Fest. It's one of three we do a year.
No, I know you do more than one.
But, the porta potties are for the other two. For the fest, we don't do any, because there's plenty there. So, we only, you know, for the pre and post, we do the.
Right. So, if you need them from July to October, because you're running three or four, four things, we can see once if we can order them and have them there as part of.
Well, I, I'm already worked, I mean, I don't know how to explain it to you. I'm glad I'm doing this, and when I was on the commission, I helped establish it, and when I stepped off, I didn't want to bury somebody else with it. I'm working with a lady by name of Went, and we get one for the la, I mean, because you, it was disgusting. It was, it was a real turnoff, and these ladies just half walk across the ball field and use filthy toilets. We have one, discreetly put it between the two barns over there, so that they get off their tractors, and they can use a clean porta potty. But, that's only twice a year. During the Potato Fest weekend, that's not a deal. So, I mean, I don't know what you want from us, I mean.
Nothing. It's just a point of, a point of reference. It was brought up at the meeting. We're not sure if anything can be changed for this year, because the Potato Fest is, you know, six, seven weeks away.
Yes.
So, it's a point of conversation, so moving forward, we can put it in the notes, and we can address this.
I, I think it's important.
And if it stays the same, it stays the same.
Okay, because, I mean, we've worked hard to build good inroads. And, I mean, Vinnie is not a vendor. He, he does, it's just a labor of love. It's a lot of work for him. The guy that runs it, his name is Vinnie. He lives in Chester. He keeps all the times. He's got the computer set up. We could never do that. He has all the rules, but he travels. I mean, the following.
Yeah, we understand that. That's, that's fine. So, it's a club.
Yeah, it's a club. It's not a, not a business.
Got it.
All right. All right, thanks, Cliff.
Can I add to the point of conversation, something else in terms of the Potato Fest? And that's the issue of the insert and the publicity for the Potato Fest. I know it's probably too late this year, but I think that in the future, we have to look at the procedure. We have an in-town paper. Unfortunately, that particular insert was awarded to another paper. I don't know whether or not the bidding process was followed properly. I know it's too late this year, as you said, but I think it's something that has to be looked at in the future, because I think it's important. Keep talking about, we want to use our vendors in town, and right away, we haven't done it yet.
Yeah, but I can see why they did that too, to cover more towns with that paper. That's probably why they did that, but they should do it in our town paper also.
What was their plan, not to do it in our town? Maybe there was.
I have no idea. I knew about this, but I.
No, well, they, they, at the, at the committee last night, they are talking about doing an insert in the Totucket Times, like a, you know, front and back insert, or maybe a four, you know, something to go inside the Totucket Times, advertising the festival, the events that will be at the festival. And they also talked about, I know, a year or two ago, they, there was a two-page spread of the layout of the festival, like where everything is, the parking, you know, the tractor pull, where everything is laid out, and possibly doing that again this year, and advertising, doing a little bit more advertising for the North Branford night on Thursday night, and incorporating that into the paper. Part of what was discussed last night in regards to the, the advertising book itself, because it's quite thick. It's not just a, you know, a few ads, is that in the past, in the last few years, a local vendor said that he wasn't able to publish that, the actual ad book itself. And I don't know if it, because of the size of it, if it fits into the Totucket, you know, like that it can be included as an insert in the Totucket Times when it's mailed out. I don't know all the specifics to that. But, I did discuss with them about getting the request for quote, and making sure that it is equitable for everyone, so that if someone does submit a quote and say, well, I will be a major sponsor and give X number of dollars, and I will do this, that everyone has the same opportunity to do that.
That's what's important. And it's too late now, but I think.
Right.
We have to make sure there's no confusion next year.
Right.
Well, it might be something that they could find out how much it would cost to mail them out as the insert, because if they mail them out with this regular stamp, it's very costly.
Right. So, this is all conversation that took place for the next, you know, moving forward, because it's too late for this year.
Because I think it's important that we continue to expand. I mean, we want to, we don't, if, because my understanding, I guess the Totucket Times only goes to people in the immediate areas, but the sound goes to the region, right?
Goes to Branford and North Branford. This, this one goes to.
Right. So, I think, I thought we were trying to pull people from out of town into the town.
No, but we also have to.
I think we should do both. I think, I think the more people that come, the better, the better. I'm not, if it's, if it's versus advertisement of a schedule versus a whole kind of like pamphlet book thing, I mean, that's, those are two different, different things, but.
So, that's all that I have.
Town managers' report.
Yeah, just a couple of items, just to give you a status. I'm working on the, in terms of positions here, vacant positions, town planner position, zoning enforcement officer, and secretary one position. So, working to advertise those. We've gone through an internal process for the secretary position. It's now going to move to an external ad, so that'll be coming out shortly. Planning is already out there, and unfortunately, I thought I'd have a finalist to give to you on the ZEO, as we talked about last week. That person backed out, and so I'm still reviewing the, the other two in terms of credentials, but I don't, I don't anticipate that there'll be someone I can bring forward at this point. We're looking for someone who's certified, so they can, you know, jump into the role and not have to wait for getting a certification that, that, in that role. So, unfortunately, that's going to take a little bit more time.
You do have someone that's temporary, right? Someone's.
Well, we brought, we brought on Al Perry. Al has, has joined us to help out Kurt in terms of the engineering stuff, to give Kurt a little breathing room to handle some of the other tasks that needed to be done with Carol's departure. So, it is ongoing, and I hope to have, hopefully have something positive to report in July 8.
Mike, do you think the number of hours, the number of hours that we're advertising is affecting?
For the ZEO, the zoning, I, I, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, it's part-time, up to, you know, 19 hours and, and, yeah, it's, it's a limited, it's a limited field, sure. When we say less than, less than 20 hours and no benefits, it's going to be a tough, tough to fill.
Right.
You know, it was disappointing that I thought we had, and clearly had someone who's well-qualified, knowledgeable, but it just, it's not going to work out. The other was the Viola contract for the wastewater sewer contract. Kurt had updated me that that's moving forward, that the award hasn't taken place, but he's doing the review in due diligence, and at least that's a bright spot. I anticipate that'll be awarded soon, and so that we'll have a seamless, non-interrupted flow, you know, in terms of service that they have, provided over the years, and a high level of service. So, we expect to continue forward and award that to Viola. So, that was, that was good news. The other thing is, just continue to work on the contract negotiations, and we have a spot there in terms of executive session there to bring them to speed on that.
Thank you. Community events and presentations. Item 6, citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence. Economic development workshop, June 2, 2014.
I'll make a motion.
You have 70 minutes of the revised minutes of economic development workshop that was held on June 2.
Seconded. Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Fucie. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Abstained.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Fucie?
Yes.
Mike, did you want to, did you want to talk about this at all? Most of us were here.
Yeah, on the, on the workshop?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think what we reported out, I think was very positive, and we've got some action steps that we need to take and to follow through in terms of moving that along, and ultimately getting to a point where we get the final report, and the final report is something we can use to turn into the, you know, RFQ, RFP process in terms of getting a developer. And I think there were some elements of that that we need to further explore and discuss, and that will happen as we move through the summer and into the fall. There's still some, some business we need to take care of. But, in the meantime, I think one of those issues, even in terms of getting out there to get an appraisal on the, on the property.
Right.
Is one thing, and to continue to look at those issues of access.
Yeah, the access, I think, is important. All right. Item 7, resignations and appointments. Item A, appointment, Phil Dollmeyer to the Pension Committee, Board of Education.
I'll make a motion to appoint Phil Dollmeyer to the Pension Committee as a representative of the Board of Education.
Seconded. Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Caprio. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Fucie?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to table the appointments of items B through H, all of the reappointments to Haz Waste Committee, as they did not come through the proper channels together.
Seconded. Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Caprio. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Fucie?
Yes.
I'd like to amend the agenda under resignations and appointments to add item 7I, the appointment of Harry Dulac to Planning and Zoning. Item J, Ron Sienna, appointed to Planning and Zoning. K, Dave Holgren, to Planning and Zoning. And L, John Pollak, to Police Commission.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Caprio. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Fucie?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make an appointment of Harry Dulac, to reappoint Harry Dulac to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire 5/31/17.
Seconded. Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Caprio. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Fucie?
Yes.
I'd like to make the appointment of Ron Sienna to the Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire 5/31/17, replacing Douglas Coombs.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Caprio. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Fucie?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dave Holgren to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to expire 5/31/16, as an alternate, replacing Nancy Clow.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Caprio. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Fucie?
Yes.
I'd like to make a reappointment of John Pollak to Police Commission for a term to expire 12/31/2016.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Caprio. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Fucie?
Item 8, unfinished business, discussion and action. Item A, updates to defined benefit plan, police units. That's still tabled. Okay. Item B, capital projects, clarification of funding sources. Item I, school track, this is a review.
And these are the, these are the items we discussed, I think, at the last meeting. We wanted to bring back for clarity. We wanted to bring back for clarification as to, or Rose can speak to this, I'm sure Counselor Angeloni spoke to this, as to the direction the council wanted to go and end up. We had brought some questions concerning the track, and I know, I think I saw Bill Chodi come in at some point, so, yeah, he's here to speak to that. But my understanding is that on the, on the track issue, or I guess I should start with saying that at the Communications Committee meeting, the superintendent had said that they were taking the laboratories off of this year's schedule.
No, not the, no, the science lab.
I'm sorry.
Science lab.
Okay, sci- science labs, to push that out in two thousand and fifteen, and that they wanted to proceed with upgrading and renovating the bathrooms and the track. And the issue with the track, question arose as well, how long ago, they thought it was ten years ago, we went into the bids, or looked in our files, there wasn't anything in our file, going back to two thousand. So, it was because the, the school had actually done it, and they'd done it back in two thousand and eight, and so the question was whether or not, you know, there was a warranty on it. That's not the case, because it was two-year with a two-year maintenance. So, there is some subsurface issues that have to be done, it's not just a clean, you know, re-layer it, things, and patching, as I understand it, certainly Bill could, could speak to that, and they'd like to, like to proceed with, you know, following this, I think the same bid spec that, that they had, and the process that they followed, and it's really within the council to direct where that project is going, if you want to turn that over to them or not.
Well, I mean, we have to get moving, the school year's ending, so, I mean, are we, is it a resurfaced, or?
Bill, can you just come up to the microphone, so we can ask you some questions?
I just wonder, just wonder how bad it is.
I guess.
Please state your name.
Bill Chodi, the supervisor of operations for the Board of Ed.
Thank you.
What we were looking at was a resurfacing, that's the red rubber, rubberized paint, and then a restriping, but over the years, and with the winters that we've had, we now have subsurface issues, we've got some holes, we've got some cracks that need to be repaired, which would have to be added to the original spec that we had put together in two thousand and eight, maybe, I think it was.
It was.
And, so we just need to add that, and then hopefully put it out the bid. Michelle Knottwood had said that she had some vendors through Crec. We had a couple of vendors that we had looked at when we put the original bid out, and also the people that did it. So that's, that's the direction we would take it in.
You're happy with the people that did it?
They, they were excellent. That, that guy really knew his stuff, and he helped me immensely, because he found certain things that I had put into the spec that I needed to add into the spec. So it was, it was extremely helpful.
So are, are bids specs already developed, or are you going off a state contract?
Nope.
Because would you, would you have enough time to put a bid together, open bids, and then have the work done in two weeks?
That's going to be a tough one, because I, because the vendors that do this type of work, they're all working right now.
They're all working.
On, on the twenty-third, when we get out, everybody else is getting out, and that's where they're going, they're going to be working. So there's going to be a small window of time to, the bid is not the issue, and getting the bid on the street is not the issue, it's just finding time to get it worked on.
Okay.
And then if they, if, with the amount of work that needs to be done under the track, under the track surface, that is going to have to be looked at and analyzed and decided how far we go, how much we're going to need. Because like I say, we got some, we got some substantial cracks, so I don't, I don't know, you know, how long that's going to take to put that bundle together. But it's just, it's just a paragraph of repair, cracks in track, on the spec that we have.
I think what we're looking at, though, is whether it's going to permanent project or B O E, right?
Well, permanent project, it, it really doesn't make sense to send it to permanent project, only because they meet just once a month, and in order to move this along, you can't wait for their meeting schedules.
Right.
So it doesn't really make sense to send it to permanent project committee. So, it's my understanding that the council has the decision on capital projects to either do them themselves, or if it's a Board of Ed project, we can designate that the board handle the project. Is that correct, John?
Yes.
Okay. So, my, my next question to Anthony is if we sent it to the Board of Ed, and they handled the project and everything, even though the money is allocated on our side, they still, they would do the bids, do all that spec, make the motions themselves?
Correct. Typically what happens in a lot of capital projects is, God, we'll spend the money, and we reimburse them after everything's done.
Okay.
So that's a common practice.
Okay. So, so on the, the track project and the bathroom project, because time is of the essence, it would make sense to send those two projects now to the Board of Ed so that they can handle those projects. We've already allocated the money and have a funding source for it, but let their department handle it, rather than sending it to permanent project.
That's fine.
And, and, and at the communication meeting, Scott had said that they would have to postpone the redoing of the science labs until next summer, because they didn't have enough time to get all of the equipment and what they needed ordered and in, in this short window of time. So that one is being put on hold right now, they're not going to do that project right now. So right now, we're just concentrating on the track and the bathroom issue. So I would like to make a motion that the school track renovation in the school, high school roof, the high school bathroom renovations, that the Board of Ed handles those two projects. Second.
Just add, you might want to ask if the allocation is going to match, given the fact that I think when they put this together, it was a resurfacing and not so much a, you know, I don't, I don't remember what the number was in terms of the allocation coming in.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. Is it, do you think it's going to be north of that, and, and maybe the council wants to allow for that?
They can come back.
Yeah, I would.
They can come back.
Yeah, I would rather have them come back once they have the.
Right, who knows what we're going to deal with price-wise?
Yeah, okay.
So they can come back when.
It's probably a pretty, pretty close, or was it, because it was fifty thousand?
It was fifty thousand for the, for the reco.
Reco.
And we're hoping fifteen thousand just to repair. But, you know, you don't know.
Right.
You take the chances when you go on the street.
Yeah.
Is, is the repair for the track any part of normal use? Is this something that we would have expected, or is it?
Yeah, it's like your tennis courts, it's like anything that's living outside. I mean, it just, you know, the weather just hammers it, and that's, that's really where we're ended up.
What comes to safety issue and everything else, we have to take care of. All right, we have a motion by Counselor Angeloni, it was seconded by Counselor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor F.C.
Yes.
And they also, at our communication meeting, I have to be, they would report the progress to us and any other issues, so we're here if they need.
We will put you on the agenda, Town Council agenda, Bill, since Scott said you are the point person on both of these projects. So, we told him that.
We won't inundate you, but we'll just.
We'll just have you on our July and August agenda, just to give us an update as to where the projects are on, on those two projects, and we only meet once a month in July and August, so, okay.
Put you on the beginning, good job. Okay, item three, roof ventilator units review.
This is Bill also. We're here to have, Bill.
Now we're on the roof.
Yeah, because there was a little confusion, for the sake of using a better word, I guess it's coming back to the board again? We're going to, we're going to take care of the unit ventilators, or the ventilators on the roof?
Well, the.
The purchase.
Well, the, there was a, at one of the building committee meetings, you gave a list of all the unit ventilators.
Right.
And, and estimated a cost based on, I think you just priced them out retail with, I don't know who the vendor was. It was approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Right.
Was the, the number that came through. So the, at the last building committee meeting, it was discussed about, you know, the roofer's starting, the contractor's starting on June twenty-fourth, and part of the bid was that the roofer has to remove the old ventilators, he's putting new curbing in there, and the new ventilators would get put in place, and then I believe one of the Board of Education's employees would hook up the ventilators.
Correct.
Correct?
That's, that's our understanding is.
So, in, in order to have the, to make sure that the correct ventilators, that the, because I wasn't sure, I didn't see the list, but if that list is the correct size and the exact number that you need, if it can get bought off of state contract, so that we have the unit ventilators in place while the roofer is still here, so that he can put them in place, because what we're trying to avoid is having too many people up on the roof, and then people pointing fingers as to if there's problems with leaks, because we all know what happened at N B I S, and we're trying to avoid that. So that was one of the concerns of the council, and that we want it written into the bid specs that the roofer took off the old ones and put the new ones in place, we would hook up after it was done. So, I guess it all depends, it, it's up to you whether you want us to order them, if you make sure you have a complete list that it goes through here, because the, the money's getting taken out of the money that's allocated for the roof project, but it's not part of the bid. So it's not part of the permanent project building committees' charge.
John Winicki had directed me to get a final, final number. The number that we had given you on the list was a, basically a retail number from our vendor that we always, that we've been working with and is also on the state bid list. So he told me to do two things, get the final, final number, based on the amount of ventilators that we would be ordering, they said there may be more of a discount than what we've already seen, and to verify and get them to give us something in writing that says they are truly on the state bid list. Then, at that point, it becomes an internal decision as to whether, you know, it comes out of the town pot, or it comes out of the Board of Education.
Well, it's going to work the same as the track and the, and the bathroom.
Yeah, it's going to be the same thing, yes, same deal. So right now, all of my concern is getting that final price, getting the verification, and finding out when we can get these things delivered. Again, you know, some of this stuff is stock, standard stock sizes, other, other parts are going to be something that is not, is a semi-custom size. So, because the roof was built in nineteen sixty-two, that's when the hole was made, sometimes they don't necessarily make that size anymore. So that's what we're waiting to see now. So that's, that's.
Okay, so I guess it would make more sense to let the Board of Ed also handle this project on the roof ventilators, and we'll do it the same, and let you handle that, since you're dealing with the, this way you get the correct sizes, you can deal with the vendor's state contract, and get them in, in a range for all of the delivery and everything, and you can have control of getting that in, so that's here during that time. So I'd like to make a motion to have the Board of Education handle the roof ventilators for the North Ramford High School.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor F.C.
Yes.
Hey, Bill.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, proposed ordinance, two thousand and fourteen dash two, chapter forty. We had kind of discussed this at our last meeting, and I've kind of reviewed it.
Right, you should all have a, you know, a highlighted, highlighted version of chapter forty.
I'm going to ask the question again, not one of our residents will ever see a bill from this, right?
Well, that's the problem.
That's the problem.
Yeah. That was my, that was my concern last time, and that's, and there's no mention of anything like that in the current ordinance. We, charging people for these services is in the nature of the tax, and that's okay, but to charge people who pay for insurance a tax, but not charge people who don't pay for insurance, not a tax, or they don't have to pay, there's a disparity there that, that creates a problem. And I don't think the insurance companies would, would like to have that happen if they got wind of it. So, it may not be cost-effective to, to pursue somebody for a two-hundred-dollar bill or a fifty-dollar bill, although, as I noted in my opinion to the, to Town Manager's office, we do have a suspense list that goes after people for up to fifteen years in arrears for much lesser amounts.
Right, but I don't want to be giving somebody a bill after their house burned down.
Well.
You know what I'm saying?
You don't have to give a bill, you don't have to make a charge, you can just come out of the, right now, it's coming out of our, out of our fund, period.
Right, but what, what they were saying was, the insurance company will pay it, and our residents will never see a bill. That's what I was told at the last meeting.
That's right. And that, and I had to put my two cents in there and say that, that's a disparate treatment, you can't.
Right, it's unequal, it's unequal treatment.
Right, so I just took it out.
Why don't we just do like the federal government does, and just call it something else besides a tax, and then they get their money anyway?
Well, we're not exactly calling it a tax, we're, you know, that's my.
That's your interpretation.
That's my interpretation.
Right.
But if you're going to charge a fee or a cost for a particular service, to some people in the community who happen to have insurance, but not charge other people, or worse, charge other people as if they were going to be responsible, and then not, and then not bill them, or however it would have worked, is, is a problem. Right now, we don't have any charges.
Right.
Against anybody, so if the fire department needs some extra money to replenish a particular vehicle or product, it comes out as an increase to the budget. Instead, we're having those people who actually, it's really a user fee, those people who are unfortunate enough to.
Right.
Suffer a loss, they're going to pay the full service for that event. It's a, it's a problem. Now, on the other side, I haven't, I've been told that there are, there are towns that do this. I don't know that it says in the ordinance that we're going to only pursue people who have insurance or not. And I believe this ordinance that you have, because I think I asked the question last time, was said to be a compilation of several different tasks.
Right.
So, the only thing I'm, the only thing I'm commenting on is not the amount of money, I have no idea whether that amount is appropriate or fitting, or something council wants to charge.
Okay, so if you looked at this and changed things around?
I did already.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, what, what I did was simply take out express language that said, this is what we're going to do, whether they, whether they go ahead and do it or not, I'm not going to be policing that.
Okay, so we can, we can bill the insurance company to not bill the people by doing that?
Not in my opinion, no. I mean, e- either way, it's, either way, it's not treating people equally. And the problem is, we have this glaring example in town where we pursue people for personal property taxes of much less amounts of money, people who aren't even living here anymore. Wherever they go, we now have a very aggressive, or we're in the process of obtaining a collection agency to go after them.
Right.
So it's, it's, it's a, it's a hard issue, because you make a good point, that these take it upon themselves to go after the town for treating insurance companies differently than everybody else.
Have you looked at insurance contracts? Is it in the contracts that they'll pay these fees?
Oh, I, I take that for granted. They, they, that's the representation that, that they do typically have it. That's what was so convenient about presenting it in the way they, in the way Anthony presented it the last time, that these insurance, the insurance companies regularly do pay for this. That's not the, that's not my issue. My issue is.
Okay, so the insurance companies pay for this if we bill them?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's not a bad thing.
Is there a deductible?
No, it's. So you're telling me you can't mix some words up there and give me some mumbo jumbo that says we can do this?
Thank you. It's not a question of mixing up the words, it's a question of mixing everybody else up.
Well, that's nothing.
We're mixing up the right people.
There you go.
If you want me to take a, if you want me to delve in this even further, I would be happy to do that.
Well, if we can do this.
On the surface.
Yeah. If we can do this without hurting our residents, obviously, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, if other towns are doing it, there's gotta be a way to do it.
Well, for the most part, everyone who has a home or a building.
You hope they have homeowner's insurance, right?
Yes.
Right.
Now, some of these other things, I'm not sure there's always insurance for. Some of these are having your alarm checked or having, you know, the building inspector check on something. I don't know that those necessarily even come under insurance, in which case, that's, that's fine with me.
Yeah, that just sounds like a fee for, for somebody to come over and do something.
And everybody's gonna be treated equally. So I guess, I guess maybe we could refine this to those events of homeowners that would not be covered by insurance automatically. If 90% of what we're talking about and we're taxing people who own their own buildings or their homes are gonna be covered, then we don't, we don't have a big, we don't really have a problem. And if the other 10% are things that are regularly not covered by insurance, like checking your alarm box, then everybody's gonna be treated the same as well.
Okay.
So my reaction was to see in the ordinance originally, the express statement in effect that we're not going to pursue people who don't have insurance. That's where the, the lights went off in my mind. Now, that may be a distinction without a difference. There may not be, I mean, that's something I'd like to see. I'd like to see if there are people who, who can insure for a particular risk and are doing it, and risks that aren't typically insurable anyway, in which case, everybody's exposed to it. I, we could do that, we could look at that, see.
Yeah, I think we should look at something because we can benefit the fire department and we could benefit, you know.
I think the towns would benefit, in fact.
Well, yeah, but the fire department, they, they do a heck of a job and they're volunteers and let me tell you, the more help we can give them, the better. We have a great, great volunteer fire department.
So maybe that's really not, really not a legal area, maybe staff could check into the types of services that we would be billing for and seeing if that is typically, maybe go through our own insurance vendor and, and see if.
Talk to some other towns that do it and see what they do.
I get copies of ordinances.
Yeah, and this way tell them, say, well, how do you go about doing this and differentiate, differentiating between the people with insurance and without insurance and how does it all work? This way we'll be more informed and hopefully we can do something.
And then we have Proposed Ordinance 2014-3, Chapter 205.
Yeah, 205 is the street signs and numbering of buildings. And I don't know if you wanna just hold that and couple it with Chapter 40, which is the insurance stuff and wait until they're both ready.
Yeah, because I mean, we're not doing a public hearing.
And then move it out to a public hearing together.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, we can, you can discuss this, I mean, this was, John and I worked on this as well in terms of just a slight modification, as you can see, was getting rid of that October 1st '95 deadline and putting, you know, something for 2014. And then also, John brought up the point that, you know, if you live on a house with a corner lot and the house faces a state highway, but your mail in your driveway is on the side street, we just tweaked that little passage there to add that. So unless there's something else that somebody has issue with, with the signing and numbering of buildings, this looks like it would be ready to go, obviously, but we'll, we'll hold it back and you can sleep on it and if something else pops up, we can, we can refine it, modify it and get it ready for the next meeting.
All right. Item nine, New Business Discussion in Action. Item A, Update 12, Bitter Street Drive, North Rampart.
Yeah, we, this is the, I think I've provided, I think it was Joe, Councilor Fawn and asked for the copy of the title on that and then the issue of whether the, where the property line was, so that we felt probably a good idea to get a survey done. So Kurt is, is, is working on that and putting that together to, to quote it and, you know, find a company to get out there and survey property lines. But I think that's the, the first step that the council would want, that information first before they go into consideration of whether or not this should go to A24 Review and possible referral to getting it over to, if you, if you like, to turning that over to the land trust. And I think that's sort of the, where we're at at this point, so.
All right.
That's the, that's the update there, we aren't pursuing it. Kurt should have, I don't know if there's anything you wanna add, add to that?
Just one thing, just to clarify, when I, when I'm asking for, basically you wanna make sure that no approach has been on the town property.
Right.
Getting a place on that. What I did include in my request approach that I'm intending to send out is normally if there's an approach, then, you know, then what do you do with it? Normally, if there's a property line, situation like that, you try to come up with a swap property, so everybody's whole. And I was asking for a number of that at the same time, not knowing your desk was going forward, but I wanted at least to get that number initially. And that was my, you know, false process, I thought the two mayor, and it's, it's the general thing that happens, the mayor may not require, but I'm gonna conclude that in the air and we'll decide what we have to do with it. Just one more question.
All right, thank you, Kurt. All right, Item B, Update, CMed. I'm not sure if you've read in the newspaper, but CMed, which is the dispatch that is provided for the ambulance to the hospital, it's actually a separate from our dispatch. It's a patch that patches in to the hospital. And God forbid they need another ambulance, it could also dispatch another ambulance. Well, CMed, it appears, is gonna be no more. City in the Haven is pulling out and they were probably the number one as far as the amount of calls and the budget. West Haven is following suit, possibly Hampton. And this serviced, I believe, 18 towns. And what we need to look at now is a Plan B for our town. We don't make up a big portion, however, our people need the service. We have to have a patch. It's not regulated by the government, by the state, believe it or not. However, the state does regulate, we have to have a patch, we have to have all these different items.
So we can do it in-house?
Not really.
Cost prohibitive, right?
Is it?
Yeah.
But what we need to do is either give the town manager or the fire chief the ability to react, because today I got a call and I was asked to come down here and I was sat in on a conference call. And there's gonna be a move when CMed closes and I think it was called Compatch?
MedCom.
Or MedCom?
MedCom.
MedCom. That is gonna be a new venture that's, they're already working on, state of the art.
But they're not up and running yet.
They will be by, they were shooting for July 1st, it appears it's gonna be August. But we wanna be in line and ready.
Yeah.
As far as getting in. Now, I heard, you know, we're paying roughly $24,000, we get $4,000 from the state, so I think we're roughly at about $28,000. It's possible it would be somewhere of a, somewhat of a savings, what they're looking to do. And it would be a one-year agreement. And I know we always want John to look at all these agreements before we enter into them, but this is kind of a situation where we have to, we're kinda handcuffed, because they may not have the capacity for all the towns.
All the towns that are getting.
And.
What is CMed being disbanded?
There's supposed to be a meeting this Friday, but I'm not sure if that's gonna take place, because they haven't sent an agenda yet. New Haven has already, it's pretty, I think, solid that they're gonna pull out. And interestingly, CMed was charged with cutting their budget by 30%. And for them to do that would be major layoffs, they're.
They're not gonna be financially viable.
They're not, there's no way they can function.
Right, they're not gonna be financially viable, they're not gonna be in business.
Unfortunately, I got all this at about four o'clock today, so I didn't, wasn't able to make copies for everybody, but I'll get it to all of you and.
What other companies out there do this?
It's a very specialized field.
I'm sure, yeah.
And that's the part where John's gonna come in a little. There may be one other company out in the valley, but my suggestion, you know, from hearing what I heard today, is we really wanna go.
Yeah.
With New Haven, we know this, I think, company.
Yeah, the, the, time is of the essence and.
What do you know about this company?
Well, it, it's, AMR, I think is the, is the company they're.
Oh, so AMR's the one that's gonna start it?
Potentially, yeah, I think that's what they're looking at.
Okay, well, that, that makes a difference, right there.
But think of it, I mean, in this situation has, is evolving, I mean, it's, it's, it's happening rapidly. Whether or not the actual CMed organization has a meeting on Friday or not, it's still unknown to me. I have not received a communication. But, you know, Chief Seward was at a meeting of the subcommittee that was, CMed had, had given charge to, they met with the governor's chief of staff to try and figure out, you know, where the regulatory process and who has the overreaching authority, and really there, there isn't, like you would think under public safety, like dispatch centers. Well, emergency management services is sort of this orphan out there that, that nobody has essential jurisdiction. The only caveat, the only mandate is to say that you must have a medical patch in the field, which means you have that direct contact to the hospital. Where you go, what organization you, you go to, that, that's up to each individual town.
So that's all private company.
So if you're in a CMed, we are currently in a CMed, a CMed organization, encompasses 18 towns, of which largest one is New Haven. When, and they, they are going, it's not, they've told, but they're, they're going. So when they go, it's like a house of cards, right? So West Haven goes, Hampton goes, Meriden goes. All that's left is smaller towns, there's no way they can support that structure. So what I think the mayor's saying is that time is of the essence is critical, that we want to, you know, be in, in the position where we're exploring all of the options and be able to pursue and move quickly if, if we, if we need to. And that might be, you know, with an RFP processes of our own mirrored on their process or their RFP, to look at whether or not AMR, or will we be part of this New, New Haven reconfiguration, if you will.
Mike, financially, are we, are we paid ahead with them or do we owe them money? I mean, are we gonna get stuck for money because of this?
Well, very, very good point. The, one of, one of the issues is the, recently, and I have to go back and I haven't even had a chance to go into the minutes, that either the May meeting, April meeting, this body passed on that $4,000 credit from the state as part of our.
Portion.
Portion of addition, we pay, I think, $24,000 and we pay, passed on another four. You know, at this point, it's going to the state to say maybe, you know, put that on hold, put it in escrow for us, you know, kind of hold on. But as far as the billing, I don't know if.
Monthly.
Monthly, monthly bill.
It's, it's not gonna be a lot, if, if any.
Yeah, so I, I think, you know, what I'm looking for, I guess, is, is, A, to make sure you, to give you enough information, there is gonna be a packet we can, we will, I'll send out under separate coverage, it's rather thick about all of the communications, but to try and answer your questions about what CMed is, how it works, and what are our options. And basically, that's what we're trying to put together in a very quick timeframe, is to explore and have the permission, authority to reach out to whoever it is that may be able to provide this service beyond just New Haven. And it could be sent to Shore, Shore Valley, what is it?
Valley.
Valley Shore, yeah. Valley Shore may be an option, New Haven's an option, there may be another third option on these.
And the upswing too, is they're eliminating the phone lines, this has gone total microwave and moves much quicker. And right now, the state is paying, I can't remember all the numbers we threw around today, but how many, 66 cents a call or something, it was kind of a moving target, but.
What, what is New Haven doing? Are they going with AMR's out?
Yeah.
That's what they're doing.
That's what they're doing.
Potentially, they haven't made an award yet.
Right.
But they had.
They're definitely out.
They pulled out.
Yeah, they put.
That's why CMed is full.
Yeah, they put.
CMed is.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they put out their, their RFP. You know, CMed was to respond to that. I'm not privy to, you know, what they said, other than it appears that they just submitted their current compact, so to speak, in terms of what they provide now. So it wasn't like they put together another, you know, response to that. So, again, New Haven has a timeline of July 1st. And that's.
Today, I heard the mayor of New Haven actually told, the alderman actually told the mayor to move forward, move this. And they already have, what, two dispatchers and, you know.
AMR.
And CMed, they already took away their parking for the dispatcher, because CMed's housed in New Haven. So you see what's happening.
They're mean business, though.
Yeah, and it's, and the level of service too, I mean, I don't wanna knock them, but, you know, there was a lot discussed about that. That's what I think, this is all driven from the service and the amount of money that they were being charged.
They were trying to move into our police station a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Good thing we didn't let them, huh?
Well, that's why, I mean, because this was happening two years ago.
Right.
Is, is CMed under obligation to continue to provide their service for a month after we pay for them? When's their end date? I mean, is that what the meeting is on Friday or something?
Well, the concern is, there's a board of directors and the problem being, the board of directors is made up of first selectmen and mayors. And it's political, what's going on right now, which is sad, because this is public safety, but we're very small in this little pie. So until New Haven, West Haven, Hampton solidify what they're doing, and it's gonna happen quick, we should just be ready to move. And that's why I gave that to John. We were under a 10-year obligation, I believe, with CMed and.
What if they find a way of staying solvent? Are we, are we then obligated to?
Well, that's what I was.
You know, this is the problem we're between, it sounds like, to me.
You know, there is a, some, there was some language, I kinda burst through it before the meeting, about penalty pulling out and so on. I don't know how binding their contract is.
I'll take a look at it. I would also point out that under our code of ordinances, we do have a provision for emergency purchases, which would include the type of going with another organization. It, it imposes the burden on the town manager to simply draft the rules and procedures as to what would constitute an emergency and, and how, how services can be available ourselves under those circumstances. I don't think you have to go into a very comprehensive discussion when you're talking about the emergency services and purchasing an emergency service center facility when the current one is apparently crippled to some extent. So that's, and, and the definition, since we sort of decide what an emergency is, is different from the very restrictive definition of the Freedom of Information Act. Don't think you could have an emergency meeting unless it absolutely could not be held tomorrow or the next day. But here, our ordinance gives the town manager the ability to fashion some rules for a situation like this, maybe the first time we ever had to have that. But push comes to shove and the town, I suppose, perceives this, the current CMed as not being effective or jeopardizing the needs of, of our community, we may need to go to somebody else very quickly. This is not the type of thing where you wanna have a gap.
Yeah, you can't.
And I'll look at this, I should be able to get back to you for the end of the week as to whether or not there's a liability or liquidated damages or.
Right. Yeah, I mean, and, you know, they also, we're going from an entity that had a board of directors to a private sector now. So they're still talking about possibly putting a board of directors together, which hopefully would be made up, I think, should be the fire chiefs, who, they're primarily involved, not the mayors and first selectmen. And, you know, they've already had a list, these, you know, fire chiefs have met over the last two weeks and corrected and, you know, are given, they're building this, basically. And it's gonna be a better, I think, service in the end than what they have presently. Would you agree with that? should be the fire chiefs, who, they're primarily involved, not the mayors and first selectmen. And, you know, they've already had a list, these, you know, fire chiefs have met over the last two weeks and corrected and, you know, are given, they're building this, basically, and it's gonna be a better, I think, service in the end than what they have presently. Would you agree with that, Anthony?
Mayor, what is it that we need to do tonight to make this, make sure that this happens quickly? I mean, that sounds like the, it's a pretty.
I think what we need to do is give the town manager the ability to, to work with the fire chief, and then, you know, he's gonna have to make a decision. And, you know, it's gonna be kinda backwards, where John's gonna be reviewing it after we do it. But it's gonna only could be a one-year, probably, I would say, contract. And from this discussions I heard today, we may save money, you know, we don't, we don't know, but it may, there may, it may be a little bit more expensive, but, you know, we can't put somebody's.
You can't do without it.
Right. So, I don't know how we fashion a motion to, um, to do this, but that's how I was hoping John could.
Do we need a motion, or can he just act under that ordinance?
Well, he's, uh, he can, he can prescribe rules and procedures for when an emergency practice has to be implemented. I suspect I may have a part in looking at that. But under the, under the ordinance is, it, it, for our convenience, under this situation, it allows the town manager to do that without having to come back for another council meeting. And he can, he can, at this point, um, you know, sort of fashion a, uh, some rules and procedures which would comprehend our present situation as well as future situations. And whether or not this would, you know, I suspect the rule would be whenever there's a situation where the town's health, safety, and welfare, or the health, safety, and welfare of the residents are jeopardized, that the town will be able to take emergency steps to remedy that situation. Without getting into any particular, if we don't have an emergency notification system, uh, uh, then we should have one. And, and this may be for one year or whatever, but I think it's as simple as that.
I'm very confident, after listening to Chief Seward today, and the copper call, and, and the town manager, Michael, that, you know, will get the best interest for the town.
I think the decision is, is the town council.
Yeah.
Whether to do it or not. But, in, in this particular case, the town manager would have, would have the ability to, as I say, draft the rules and procedures that would, uh, describe what an emergency situation is and what might be done. In a very general sense, I think, accomplish what the council would want to do if you're not satisfied with the results on Friday. Or from the input you get from the chief.
Right, and if they have this meeting on Friday, we're not even sure, yet.
Well, when you find things out, Michael, you can shoot us emails too.
Yeah.
You know, and keep us informed, this way we could contact each other one way or the other.
Yeah. And, you know, I had emailed CCM, and they emailed the governor's office, and sadly, they didn't have, they had no clue what's going on up in Hartford with this. And they don't wanna know. They're basically leaving it up to the towns.
To the towns, right.
And, uh.
I wish they'd leave more up to the towns, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I think, you know, from talking to the chief and listening to, I think we could end up with a better service. As long as everybody's in agreeance.
I, I, I would agree with that, I think we have to give them the latitude to get that taken care of.
It's in the best interest of everyone.
It's health and safety.
Definitely.
And then, John, you can look at the CMed thing and see.
Sure, I might have time to do it tomorrow, in which case I'll get it out to you right away. I'll copy the entire council.
Thank you. All right. Item C, historic document preservation grant, resolution.
I'd like to move the motion. If this is something we should do every year to get some grants from the state to, to scan the records in there. Whereas the town council of the town of North Bramford wishes to serve, secure, sustain historic documents preservation grants to help maintain the records of the town. Resolved that Michael T. Paul is town manager, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name of and on behalf of this municipality a contract with the Connecticut State Library for a historic documents preservation grant.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Capriel?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Hodgson?
Yes.
Councilor Pucey?
Yes.
Item D, senior center possible reuse. And I'll put the word old after the senior. It's the building by the cemetery.
Cross from the church.
Church. The, um, building is empty right now, and I know there's some folks here tonight that wanna talk about this. And, um, also, the, uh, library has expressed interest for years to possibly use a portion of the building to sell books out of. Um, I had asked Michael a while ago to run the numbers on what it cost to run the building. And I believe when it was in full operation, it was around fifteen thousand, a year roughly.
Yeah, I, I, we should probably, I'll try to pull that out.
Yeah, it was like seventy-five hundred or something, but without full swing. So, I would ask if there was someone that would like to speak on the.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lynn Riordan, and I live at thirty-three Darrell Farm Road. We are here this evening because we have a vision. We are very passionate about the possibility of opening a food pantry in the old senior center on Route eighty. My experience with Mass Mission has opened my eyes to need in North Bramford. Our organization has helped many people, however, in most cases, our assistance is only a temporary fix, as a Band-Aid would be over a serious wound. Currently, there are two thousand forty-six students enrolled in North Bramford School System. Three hundred and forty-six of those students receive free and reduced lunch. That equates to sixteen point nine percent of the student population. The State Department of Education guidelines for determining eligibility are very straightforward. Using a fair, family of four as an example, a family of four would have to earn less than twenty-nine thousand fifty-five dollars to qualify for, uh, free lunch, and less than forty-one thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars to qualify for reduced. Have you ever wondered who feeds these children during the summer, over the weekends, during school break, or on schoo- on snow days? I can tell you, at times, no one, because some parents are forced to choose between feeding their children and paying their bills. There are many hungry people living here in North Bramford. It is hard to believe, considering we live in one of the wealthiest states, and North Bramford is such a loving, wonderful, and special community. We live amongst people who are sick, some injured, others have lost their jobs, fires have wiped out homes, and we have neighbors with children who have special needs, and they need our help. We have friends who cannot work because they have to stay home and care for a sick or a dying loved one. There are families plagued by divorce, and unexpected, untimely deaths occur. I know people who have had to choose between food and utilities, food or rent, and food or medical care. Therebut for the grace of God go I or anyone else in this room. I've been poring over End Hungry, End Hunger Connecticut statistics, and I learned that fifty percent of our seniors are considered very poor. The truth exceeds the Connecticut average, and the knowledge makes me sad. I now know that twenty-two point four percent of people who rent apartments, condos, or homes are living below the poverty level. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services poverty guidelines are staggering. For example, a family is, a family is living in poverty when a family of two is making fifteen thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars gross income or less. A family of three, nineteen thousand seven hundred and ninety, and when a four-person household makes twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty. The primary needs of mankind are food and shelter. We want to open a food pantry, so groceries are available to our North Bramford families in need. Our plan is to model the pantry after the Bramford Food Pantry, since it's a well-run success. If I may, I would like to come forward with just, even though they're horrible pictures, there are a few pictures of the Bramford Food Bank. Allison DiPiolo will help us attain a five oh one C three, making our food pantry a nonprofit organization. This status allows us to affiliate with the Connecticut Food Bank, which is crucial to our success. Our entire community applauds the efforts of Joanne Wentworth, the founder of the North Bramford Food Bank over thirty years ago. Joanne has helped numerous families, and she has done a tremendous job. Many people have done what they could do to help her and the North Bramford Food Bank over the years. My family and friends organized a food drive, and we had collection boxes built for both Big Y and Stop and Shop. There was a time MBIS Community Roundup stocked the shelves for a very long time. Unfortunately, times have changed, and the reality in North Bramford, the reality is, North Bramford and Northford can no longer sustain itself. This is important, and I wanna be very clear. We are not competing with the existing food bank. We want to start a new food pantry utilizing the back room, kitchen, and hall in the old senior center. We have all witnessed our community rally for Mass Mission Five K. If given the opportunity, we hope to rally our North Bramford families, so our vision of a food pantry can be realized. We do not profess to know it all. Thankfully, we have friends, Wendy Cowles from the North, from the Bramford Food Bank, and Mary Ingeri, Gera, from the Ca- Connecticut Food Bank, who are willing to mentor our team. We have passion, energy, resources, and a desire to help our community. Mass Mission Five K is over for this year. They say timing is everything, and right now, we have time to roll up our sleeves and get to work. The old senior center needs some love, and we have a lot of love to give. It is my deepest hope that you recognize that this is a serious need that must be met, and met soon. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Now, um, I don't know how many of you have been actually in the building. Never? Well, when you first walk in, there's two offices, and it's sectioned by a wall door, then there's a pretty good-sized hall. And then straight back, there's kind of an enclave, I call it, but it's pretty big, and there's a full kitchen, two bathrooms. Um, is handicap accessible, although the ramp needs some work. I think it's a historic building, right? I think. Yeah, and, you know, it, it needs some work, but it's, it's not that bad. But, if it stays empty, it's just gonna get more decay and deplorable. We should really think about using, I think, using the building. And I know the library also expressed interest. And, you're here for the library?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Kaplan, I'm gonna speak on behalf of the Friends of the Libraries. Um, for the last ten years, Debbie Falvey, our president, and our small group of us, has raised over thirty thousand dollars for the libraries. We pay for a lot of children and adult programming, we pay for the, the museum passes that, um, our citizens use for free. And anything, and we, we, we ask the libraries for a wish list every year, and Bob Hall puts together something in conjunction with the librarians, and we try to do as much as we can. And our big fundraiser every year, and I've, I've seen some of you there, is our book sale that we have. It used to be on the lawn of Atwater, but now luckily, we're able to use Jerome Harrison. So we've been batting around this idea for quite a while, is to try to have a permanent space somewhere. And we were hopeful, when the new libraries got built, uh, renovated, that, you know, we would have a space in there, but it didn't work out, and that's fine. And I've spoken to the principals at the other schools, and, you know, and they don't have space available either. And then, when North Bramford Hall, and then the, uh, recent old senior center got, um, you know, vacated, we needed a space to store our books, to, uh, sort them for the book sale, and then we started thinking, wouldn't it be great to have an all-year space, you know, sta- you know, staff with volunteers, other towns do it, Guilford does it, North Haven does it, and they do it successfully. So, you know, Joan Candelaure's on the library board, and we spoke, and she spoke with Anthony. And when we had our book sale a couple of weeks ago, we all looked at the space, and we thought the front of the building with those two offices, as Anthony just described, would be a good space for that. And it, they're relatively small, they're manageable, and we had concerns about if the space was a multi-use building, would there be a pass-through, how could we secure this space? But then, you know, I spoke with Lynn at length, and we've worked it out where if the building was used for the food pantry and for us, it would really work well for everybody. It's a great building. I'm in love with the building, I will be happy to paint, do whatever it needs to be done, certainly. We, we have a group of volunteers as well that would love to help out. But it would be a wonderful opportunity, number one, to feed needy people in town, but also to come in, and they can read or whatever, and, and books are ver- the books that we sell are very inexpensive, and, um, I just think it would be a great multi-use building. So we hope that we, you know, both entities have your blessing, you know, at some point.
Thank you.
Um, I, originally, just for the new members on the council, um, when the senior center in the community center moved up to Stanley T., it was originally talked that we were going to close both of those buildings and then possibly try to sell them. And in looking at the space of the old senior building, um, with the parking area, the building, and it's also connected, the, the deed is connected to the cemetery next to it. So in order to sell that, we'd have to split it, I mean, there's just a lot of work involved in it, and I'm not really sure it would be worth our effort to sell that building in the little parking space. And then, during the last budget season, also Pam Gary from the Park Rec Department said that, you know, she's possibly also looking to use the center part of the senior center for her gymnastics program, that she could run some smaller programs that she has on a, a basis out of there. And so I would like the town manager to get some information for us in regards to if that is still an option that she's looking for, what types of programs, how long they would run, how much money do those programs generate, because maybe we can use some of those funds to help support that building.
Yeah, electricity, heat.
Between using it for that, and having space for the library, and having a food pantry.
I don't know if you're gonna, there's gonna be a lot of stuff packed in there, I don't know if you're gonna.
Well, I mean, we have to look at that and see once, because I think Pam's looking at more the center, um, room.
If you go around to other towns.
Could you come up to the microphone, that way the public can hear you. That's all right.
I mean, if you go to other towns, very wealthy towns, Madison, Guilford, they have brand-new buildings, beautiful food pantries. And the percentage of the people that need to, they need to assist are very minimal in comparison to our town. There is no way it's big enough to have gymnastics, library, yes, but did you see the pictures? Bramford has huge space, huge space, and so there's just no way that that would possibly work, to have gymnastics and the library and a food pantry. It's just not possible.
A lot of stuff packed in there between books and food.
I mean, we, we did speak to Joanne, uh, excuse me, Pam?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Frank Forgione, and, and I did speak to Pam, and Pam currently has gymnastics equipment in the back room, and I know that in the past, she has certainly conducted gymnastic programs, and she has expressed an interest in continuing to conduct the gymnastics programs. And, and the council's probably better talking to Pam, but I think that, uh, and I don't wanna speak for Pam, but I, I think that there is great support for the food bank in this town, and amongst the people who I've spoken with. So I certainly don't wanna exclude anyone from having their say about how to use that building, yet at the same time, with the library having already books in the front area, and the front area being perfect. And if the, if this was used as a food pantry, there is a side entrance with handicapped access. It seems that we could accommodate two great programs in one building and solve, solve an issue where, as we all know, if a building is empty, it becomes dilapidated, it starts to fall apart and fray. So this is something that I think we could bring this building back to life.
It was actually broken into.
Right, and the back deck.
Michael, do you know as far as, uh, what that building needs structurally? Is it?
Yeah.
I know it probably needs a lot of work, but that building has to be made safe before we could really do things in there.
Well, I, I, I mean, I, I think Frank's brought up some good points. I mean, the, uh, the building itself, once you vacate, right, uh, has a tendency, uh, to dilapidate, and, and so what we know is, yes, it's been, it's been broken into because there hasn't been activity, right? It's, it's a vacant building, and that, that invites a criminal element. So, uh, beyond that, yes, the back stairs and porch, the, the ramp issue.
The ramp?
Yeah, some, some, some of the, some, you know, modification, I wouldn't say there are, there are any huge structural issues that I'm aware of.
But things do need to be made.
But modified and, and right, it repaired, improved, modified, but nothing that I think is substantial at this point. But however, we've got. But however, we've gotta go through that exercise to say, okay, I mean, first and foremost, I think you realize, it's a policy decision of the board on which direction you go.
Right.
But should you go down this road, then it's doing the due diligence of finding out, you know, first, I guess, with Pam, whether or not could be accommodated or not. And then again, the actual physical status of the building and what needs to be done to bring it up.
Right.
And, and to the mayor's point, the carrying costs that we need to know and, and finding out what it was.
Well, it costs $15,000 to run the building for a year.
And it's cost.
Well, that's, that's when it was in full use.
That was full use, so it's gonna be less.
It was $7,500, $7,000.
So is it $7,500 more or is it $7,500 on top of the $50?
No, it's half, it's $7,500. The thing is.
You're probably looking at $10,000.
What we're doing here is we're benefiting two things in our community with this. And, you know, I know Pam wants to do programs and make money and stuff, but she's got her center up in Northford and I think my opinion is that we do something to give back to our people.
I think it's a wonderful idea and I love the location, given that that's the area that we want to identify as our town, give it more of a town feel. I guess the question I have is, I'm not sure how, how it really is different from the existing food bank that we have. But I, I know that the food bank that Joanna's been.
It would be different.
It's gonna be on a larger scale.
They would be able to give meat and things in refrigeries. We don't have any refrigeries.
So would yours, would yours still exist?
No, no, I don't think so.
You're gonna be affiliated with the state, right?
Our intent would be to form a 501(c)(3).
Right.
Comply with the rules and regulations that would make us eligible to be part of the Connecticut Food Bank so we could get food from the Connecticut Food Bank.
Right. It's gonna expand, it's gonna expand the program is what it's gonna do.
And, and I'd like to say this as well. I know that without Joanne, many, many hundreds of families and thousands would not have been fed over the years.
Without doubt, yeah.
And she's the catalyst behind all the giving that takes place for the people in North Branford regarding food and shelter. So again, I applaud everything she's done.
As long as we're not taking anything away and we're, we're adding, I think it's, it sounds like a win-win situation that we can.
Well, well, I guess one of the major questions is, how do we pay for the renovations to the buildings to get it up? So that's.
If I may address that, barring significant structural issues, which I hope don't exist and certainly if they did exist, the seniors wouldn't have been there recently. We have a, we have a, a lot of people who are ready, willing and able to step in with paintbrushes and repair work, fixing the ramp. So I think that we have, we have some great assets already and feet on the ground, ready to go. There's a lot of enthusiasm for it, so any way we can help the town, help us, we're there.
Michael, do we need to have licensed contractors work on this building because it's our building?
Um, well, I, I think.
Do you know something about that, Lynn?
I don't know about that, but what I do know is that obviously we'd be prepared and we know we would need to take out insurance, though I think that puts the liability on us. You're the lawyer, he would have me.
Well, I think what you need to do too is get the building official involved, Tom, to go over there, take a look at the ramp.
Take a look at it, so you know what the condition.
Right. I mean, I'm sure.
Right, 'cause being a town building, we still, we have to make sure probably that licensed contractor's work on it and everything, I would think.
Well, I think only if they're structural. But I mean, if you're talking about painting and minor repairs, I mean, I don't think.
Even the handicap ramp and all that?
Yeah, I think.
Depends if it's changing a board or rebuilt, you know?
Right.
Well, I was, I was thinking to Tom and Fran that we, we do an assessment first.
Right.
Then come back and say, you know, this is, this is what we see.
Actually, Fran took us through the building. We did a walkthrough and he pointed out the few things that he was well aware of that need to be fixed. The back, you know, where the door was broken into, there's a back little deck there that needs repair. And he said the ramp was in need of a little repair. He didn't make it sound like the whole thing needed to be replaced. And I, you know, I'm a neat freak anyway, so I could take a look at the building and I would want it painted and the walls painted and the floors stripped and cleaned and, I mean, that's how I.
Yeah, I'm just, I just don't want anybody to get hurt.
And I agree.
Make sure that we're protecting the town from lawsuits and negligence. If we, if you don't have the town, the ability of to code and someone gets hurt, then we're liable.
Correct. But if the town would still have to carry insurance on the building because it's a town building, so.
Well, the same thing happens when I run my race. I have to take out insurance to have the banner up on from TILCON. I take out insurance for TILCON, but that's, that also protects anybody driving down the road. And that protects everybody who runs during the race. But yes, it's still, it's still our town and I guess if somebody was gonna be sued during the race, they'd probably sue you and sue Matt's Mission as well. Also, the, one thing I wanted to say in regards to resources is we had a Matt's Mission meeting the other day and we are willing to make a donation of $10,000 towards this project.
Okay.
The thing is, timing is everything.
John, with this being a historic structure, is there any guidelines or just for the exterior, right?
Correct.
You just want to change the exterior, I think.
That, that's a correct statement. I, I, I wouldn't say that you could gut the inside and still comport with the historic. But I think one of the, I think one of the, one of the things that we learned, or maybe I should say I learned, from the Amato experience.
Yeah.
Is that the, the law really favors changing a zone for the protection of a historical structure by giving it another use. So if you had an 18th century house, it wasn't going to be able to be, survive as a residence, but it could survive as something else. The zone could be changed for that purpose. So I don't see a problem from all, all I've overheard.
Okay.
How long would it take you to get your tax exempt status left? Do you know how long it would take?
Actually, our attorney, I already have one. She was going to come, but she had ended up going home sick. So Matt's Mission actually took, it was pretty quick. It was pretty quick. It didn't take as long and we're working with the people from Branford, so we already have all the verbiage that we would write. It's, I think it's pretty simple and pretty straightforward. But, but at the same time too, you can forge ahead and do what needs to be done.
While you're applying for it.
While you're, while you're applying for it. It shouldn't be a problem.
Are you aware of any grants or things that might be available? Since it is a historic, historic, historic building, we're doing this for a kind of a humanitarian purpose. I wonder if there are any grants or monies available that could help us to, to do this because.
There might be. Basically, it becomes a non-conforming use. If you can use it, I, I, I think I said change the zone. I didn't mean that. I meant that if it's a, if you have a historic building and you can put it to another use, you're allowed to do that. And it's, it acts as if it were used even before zoning came into place. So there's a definite priority or benefit to using a historic building. You're talking about like the 1920, the Old Town Hall?
Yeah.
1910, 1915, yeah. Yeah, I think that's certainly, I don't know about the asbestos situation.
You're not removing anything and not doing it, you don't have to be.
And you're gonna keep the windows open as much as possible.
So I think, I think to go forward, then we just need really like Franny and Tom to just.
Look it over, make a list of what we need.
Right.
Get everything done and then we can start rolling.
Right, yeah.
Doesn't bother me. I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a great thing.
Me too.
So.
And the library too.
I'd like to make a motion that we proceed ahead with the, turning the senior center on Foxden Road into a, the North Branford Food Bank and a bookstore for the library.
I'll second the motion.
Is there a, is there a specific, what's the, is it 1524, the address 1524?
1675.
1675, thank you.
And if you could report back at the next council meeting, which is July 8th, with, have a report done up by the building official and the director of Public Works as to what steps need to be taken?
Mike, if you could also find out to Vinnie's question, if they, if it's okay, you know, that we're gonna have volunteers, what needs to be a licensed contractor and what could actually be done by volunteers? I mean, that, if, if you got them going out there, that might be a good thing to.
Yeah, just to be careful.
Ah, you know.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, so any other discussion? Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
And moved by Counselor Antoloni, seconded by Counselor Fucie. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rimmer?
Yes.
Counselor Nishaloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Hudson?
Yes.
Counselor Fucie?
Yes.
Thank you guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can we go back to the CEMED issue?
Yes.
Sure.
Have a, have an instant opinion here.
That was quick.
Yeah, well, I didn't say it was right, I just said it was quick.
We're getting our bank for a block tonight. Right at the meeting.
Presuming, the agreement that, the agreement that I have here, actually, that I was handed actually expired May 22nd, 2011, and there's an amendment procedure that it could be amended for up to 40 more years, but I don't know what exactly they amended it to. But presuming that all the terms and additions from the original agreement we signed that expired in 2011 continued, Article 16 is entitled Withdrawal of a Member. And keep in mind this Friday meeting date because it could be very critical if I'm interpreting this correctly. Basically, any member town, by vote of its legislative body, can vote to withdraw. And the only procedure that follows after that is that you give the Board of Directors a notice that you're withdrawing. And within 45 days after that notification is received by the Board of Directors of your proposed withdrawal, you meet with the Board of Directors. And your obligation is as follows, and this is, this is, this is very interesting to me because presuming the fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th, okay? You meet with the Board of Directors and the Board of Directors shall determine the share of the system's expenses and obligations remaining due from the withdrawing city or town effective as of the last day of the current fiscal year, which shall be the date the withdrawal will take effect. So in other words, your expenses will be assessed as of June 30th, 2014. And that's also going to be the effective date of your withdrawal. The only possible conflict is that you're supposed to meet within 45 days. You could meet within 45 days, before July 1st. So what I'm saying is, they're having a meeting now on Friday. There could be a lot of towns withdrawing in the last two weeks of this month. And their only obligation would be whatever their proportionate expense would be based on the expense of the, of the system as of June 30th, which is what you'd be paying for anyway. That's, this is, what we should do is probably send copies of this to the, to the council members, but that's, that's it. You vote as, now, you may have to convene a special meeting to, to take that vote. You may not want to do that this evening without a backup plan. So, you know, although they, although your voting to, your voting to secede from the organization tonight doesn't constitute you seceding from, from the board. You have to have this meeting and then it wouldn't be effective until June 30th.
Say they go out of business and they owe half a million dollars. Are we liable for any of that?
You're liable for whatever the costs are and obligations of the system as of the last day of the current fiscal year.
For instance.
So you could be on the hook. If this were, if this were, if you do this vote in July or August, you could have a whole other year of waiting to find out what your total obligation's gonna be.
Well, not only that, what about unemployment? You know, there's gonna be eight, or I forget how many dispatchers were there, but I saw the salaries were, the bulk of this, it's like half a million dollars or something. So you got unemployment benefits. I mean, unless some of these dispatchers get hired somewhere else. So there's gonna be some costs.
Yeah, and that'll have to be, that'll have to be appropriated amongst the group. It, it goes on to say in another section that, in the event that.
I thought so.
As, as long as there's one town that still wants to be in the system, the system will go on, but everybody who withdraws will have to pay their proportionate share of whatever costs or expenses there may be. As of the end of the current fiscal year.
Okay.
Which is when your withdrawal will be effective. You couldn't have timed it more perfectly.
Say that we don't withdraw and they go down the tubes on July 7th.
Yeah.
Okay. So they went down the tubes and they owe money, now we're on the hook.
Well, everybody's gonna be on the hook.
Right, but we're on the hook. I don't care about who you owe.
Yeah, well, we'll be on the hook for our proportionate share. Oddly enough, they don't provide for their, you know, they're, they're a charitable organization, I suppose. They come under one of those exemptions, but that doesn't mean they can't wind up in effect being insolvent.
Okay, so now next, what's our backup plan? Do we have anything? I know you're working on that AMR deal.
Right.
But say we pull out of this July 1st, we gonna have somebody doing this July 2nd?
Well, that's what we gotta explore, Shoreline or.
Valley Shore Communications.
Okay, so now you guys.
Make it June 30th.
Know what you need to do. And we gotta get this buttoned up before July, right?
Yeah, I think you're, are you gonna be at the meeting on Friday?
Well, they don't even know if it's gonna be held.
I, we don't know if it's gonna be, we haven't seen it.
Yeah.
So if we can switch and get out before July 1st, we better do it.
Yeah, and you're also, you're also, it seems to me, getting the benefit of having the, of taking a snapshot of the whatever expenses you owe now anyway, for now, rather than to wait to see what's gonna happen after July 1st.
I think what the worst case could be $28,000, I think, or $27,000, right?
That's a whole year.
That's a whole year, I mean.
Yeah, if you wait to July 1st, that's what it could be.
Right, that's what, the worst-case scenario.
But it could be 28 on top of whatever we're paying for a new company.
Right. And also though, they have a fund for capital, you know, the way they're set up. So some of that money in their capital fund is ours.
Well, also, I don't know, you, you didn't stress, Mr. Mayor, that the reason why these towns are withdrawing are because it's, because of financial reasons as opposed to service. Is it more service or is it more that they're, they can't function?
It was a little of both. It was a combination of the service and what, how much they were paying. It's disproportionate. If you, once you read, start reading in that packet, New Haven was paying.
$1.5.
$1.5 million and they had a population that, well, I can't remember all the calls, but they were the bulk of it. But yet Hartford was.
600,000 less.
$600,000 less and they had a bigger population.
And more, and more calls.
And more, and more calls.
Same with Bridge, aren't we?
No, but they, what they did is they gave you.
Yeah, I know.
A mirror of what's going on. It just doesn't make any sense. You know, and, you know, CEMED, in their budget, the director made $88,000 last year, but zeroed out his salary out of the budget. So he made nothing.
Yeah, but any member of years ago.
And I'm saying of course.
Gus, Gus Assis was there.
Yes.
And it was, it was, there was always problems with it.
Yeah, we mentioned today that John Gustafson, you know, wasn't.
I, I remember from, from years ago.
I didn't want to throw anybody under the bus, but.
To go back to Vinnie's point, there is, the, the chief has reached out and Valley Shore Communications out of Trubet and Westbrook, they can handle, basically three things that CEMED will do for us going forward. It'll be patching to the hospital, medical control, which you need for your paramedics and even EMTs. There's arranging for mutual aid ambulance, is if our ambulance is busy, getting another ambulance in. Or mass casualties, which fortunately, we don't have that many of. If we go to the Valley Shore option as a stopgap, they can do the patching aspect, or allow our paramedics to talk to medical control. They can't do step two and three. So it'd be a degradation of service for that brief period while we were with them, until the AMR or this MedCom proposal comes to fruition, and that's the path we ultimately go down, that would be probably August 1st was the conversation we had today, so-
So we gotta carry about thirty days.
Yeah.
I thought you were talking about Valley, that one.
Well, we gotta do it.
No, Valley Shore Communications, no, not, not the Valley Valley.
That's why my feeling was, we have to kinda have leeway here a little, and latitude in order to make this work.
Well, so can we, if we vote to get out of CMed effective June 30th, and go with Valley Shore Communication until the time that we can obtain quotes from, and, and make a decision, I mean, it's a stopgap measure, and then we can-
I think that's what you should do.
And then just-
And then give, give the ability for, for the manager to fold, you know, if that ever happens, where we, if CMed does fold July 2nd, we have Valley Shore in place, we can, you know, go in there.
Yeah, but we could-
TruBeF and Westbrook out of the state police area.
Do you think that'll be longer, right, hospitals that we, or?
We're not-
No, no, just, just radio.
They're not doing transportation, they're just doing communication.
My only, my only concern, though, is moving too quickly, too. You know, do we wanna be the leader in this?
Right.
You know?
Well, we heard today, too, is of this new MedCom that's gonna be created. I asked the question, could you absorb all eighteen towns in the current CMed? And the answer was no. So if there's room for ten at the table, and we're number eleven, what do we do? So we have to act quickly to be of the chosen ones, but not too quickly to be the leader of the pack, so it's kinda like a fine line, that's why I think you need, Mike, the, the ability that you use that emergency procedure or purchase clause to say, okay, we have to, now, Valley Shore is represented, there won't be any additional cost for them, they have the capacity as well, kinda similar to what the animal control situation with Branford, is excess capacity, they can provide it for us at no cost. Again, if you go to the MedCom proposal, then this new entity will divvy the cost up amongst the various towns that are participating in that program. That's how New Haven's gonna achieve some of the savings, they had a number that going in, and then as more towns come in, their proportionate share goes down. We would be one of those towns, hopefully, that would be, you know, factored in. They're, they're looking primarily at New Haven and the contiguous towns to New Haven, but certainly we would be one town removed from contiguous to New Haven, contiguous to East Haven, basically, that purchased New Haven. So they would definitely include us as part of the mix that they would bring to this new MedCom communication system. And what it is, basically, is AMR out of Milton Avenue is gonna be manning it, staffing it, with two folks at AMR, using the infrastructure that, actually Chief Seward was instrumental in getting through the UASI, urban, urban, urban area search and rescue through all this Homeland Security money. They built a major infrastructure of telecommunications in New Haven, all microwave-linked, all, you know, very efficient.
Putting in the flat screens now.
Yeah, they're putting in the flat screens, and they bought the old armory across from, was it Yale Bowl, I think it was, or?
Yeah.
Then that's gonna move, they're gonna move 911 from New Haven Police out to there as well. So New Haven's got some things in the works, it's been going on for over a year, we were told today, and it's coming to a head now, and now it's a matter of what happens if CMed folds, what do we do? Well, again, the chief has arranged with Valley Shore, they could do a stopgap measure and provide at least that medical control piece of it. And until, we, we have the RFP that I received today from the chief, and I kinda converted it to North Branford, sent it around to Mike and Anthony, I could send it to John, too, for them to look at it, and then have that on the street to see who responds to that, and if this new MedCom thing, you know, responds to us, then maybe that's the path we can, you know, go down eventually. They can do all three things, they could do the patching, they can do the, 'cause what happens, what's gonna happen, it's gonna be interesting, because, again, if our ambulance is tied up, right now, they pick up the phone, they call CMed, hi, we need another ambulance, we have a mass, we have an accident, we need three ambulances. CMed then finds where the closest cars are, whether it's AMR, whether it's Branford, whether it's Guilford. Under this stopgap measure, when you call Valley Shore, they're not gonna have that ability. So our dispatcher's gonna have to call AMR, do you have any cars available? No, call Branford. Do you have any cars available? No, call Guilford. So it's gonna be an interesting thirty-day window.
Right, that's why I'm hesitant to move to Valley out of the gate yet either.
Yeah.
You know, 'cause I know, talking with Chief Seward, he had Plan A and B, kind of.
Right.
And I know this meeting Friday's not gonna happen, because, again, like I said, it's political, and the chairperson, they're, they are going to vote to remove this Friday.
Who's the chairperson?
And that's the person that does the agenda. So I think quite conveniently, you know, there's not gonna be a meeting.
Who's the chair?
First-elect woman of Bethany.
Bethany, Darryl Anguski. But, yeah, so-
But didn't New Haven already vote to get out of CMed?
They've, the Board of Alderman have given the mayor the-
The latitude, yeah.
June 30th was the cut, the drop dead date, but then they said, okay, if, if you're, if you're working, CMed responded to the RFP, give them a time to review the RFP, meet with CMed, meet with this new MedCom, go through the steps, basically.
Right.
But this MedCom's gonna be, be happening no matter what?
It's the way it sounds, yes.
Okay.
AMR, Meg, that's where we wanna be with this, with that con.
Right, exactly.
And if you look at, and you gotta get to the whole council, all the towns signed the con, except New Haven. New Haven, they were the first signature on there, there's no signature. They were smart, they didn't sign it.
On CMed.
Right.
Yeah.
So they can pull out pretty much, they, they actually told on the guy today, so their day-to-day with CMed.
So can we make a motion to give the town manager the latitude? Well, no, that was, well, that was-
That was, see, the emergency thing.
That was the emergency.
But until the, until the notice of the, of our, of your vote, if there is one, is received by the system, you're not withdrawn.
Right.
So you could take a vote, and I'm not recommending anything like this, and I probably would recommend that you have this conversation with some of the other, with your peers of some of the other towns here, and see what their thinking is, because I see this as a very fast ending to this month.
Right.
The council could vote to withdraw, but at the same time, not give, let's say, the town manager the ability to notify the system until he receives further notice from the council, but-
'Cause what'll happen is, one of the two things, he'll, he'll be at the meeting, the Chief Seward, or, you know, 'cause I, I don't know if I'll be able to make it, and he'll need the ability to vote, make a motion to sever ties, if that comes to that, at that meeting.
Well, and, and the timing of it, given our, our structure, we don't meet till July 8th, so, you know, we need to-
I think we need to do something.
Yeah, to a special meeting, or have the authority to be able to submit a letter, or to transmit to the, to CMed that we're pulling out.
So if we pull out after July 1st, we could be liable for twenty-eight thousand, you're saying, or twenty-four thousand?
Yeah, we'd be in another fiscal year.
Right.
So that's how I read it. Now, the, again, I'm also interpreting that you have to have a meeting within forty-five days as still being possible. You know, I don't read it as meaning that has to, you have to have a full forty-five days within which to hold a meeting, as long as it can be accomplished.
Well, if we pull out, it could take us forty days to drag our feet to get out of there, right?
We can notify them on- Well, no, 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 if you don't notify them, the time, the clock doesn't start to run.
Because I know the other entity won't be up and running until August.
Right, and you got another year.
Then we gotta be on the hook for twenty-four grand.
So-
So we gotta make a decision. We either do the stopgap for a month, and have to do the stopgap.
New Haven, New Haven pulled out, and they're going day-to-day paying them, right? We should pull out.
That's right, they should pull out, right at the end.
And let, and just stay right where we are with CMed.
Like June 29th, or whatever day it is.
We're already giving time to have, have a meeting with you.
Oh, we having a meeting right now?
No, with them.
See, Ben, with CMed-
I'll send you a copy of the provision tomorrow, and you can see what I'm talking about, that, that you vote, but it's only a proposal until it is actually received, not mailed, or not delivered, but received by the system. And then there's forty-five days where you, where they can meet with you. Now, I'm interpreting that as, that's still possible to occur, even though there's not forty-five days left in the month.
They're not gonna be able to meet with us, but there's gonna be so many people exiting, it's gonna be a max.
Yeah, well-
But if you meet the letter, that you send it certified return receipt, so that they get it before June 30th, then-
Well, I, I wanna make it so that there would be enough time to possibly meet, if you, if they don't receive it until exactly June 30th, they could argue that you reached that forty-five day provision, 'cause they could not have possibly held a meeting on the last day of the time when you sent it. So I would, I would recommend that, if that's what you intend to do, to-
Do it.
To do it, give them a week, give them ten days.
Do it.
You know, what's gonna, it doesn't say anything's gonna happen, you don't have to listen to it, you can close your eyes.
And they'll probably keep taking our, our money as long as we wanna give it to them, even after contract.
Yeah.
We might not even have to need the stopgap. We can go on a day-to-day basis with them.
Well, that's what I'm hoping.
Right. So we either use a stopgap, or we go day-to-day with them.
Yeah, which is-
We gotta pull out.
Yeah, just pull and let them determine whether we go stopgap.
They don't want our money for the month, and they don't wanna bear about us.
During the break, just have-
You're talking about the stopgap.
Well, no, I mean, in terms of- Copy the section.
AMR's not gonna be able to take care of it.
This is Article 16.
No, that's the stopgap.
It's just this-
I was just concerned that if we pulled out of CMed, you know, we're not that big, you know, and-
Yeah, but we could decide, and they could decide, if that's the better option, to stay with CMed on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah.
If the fire chief and the town manager decide that that's the better option than going to Valley Shore Communication, then fine, give them that authority to make that decision.
Yep.
Until the other one is up and running. But I think we need to pull out.
Yeah, we do, because we're gonna get whacked.
Let's make that motion.
Okay, so, how would we word that, Mr. Attorney?
Okay.
Do you wanna drop something while we continue on, and then we can go back to it?
No, I would say you could do this. Pursuant to Article 16, entitled, conveniently enough, Withdrawal of Member of the Agreement, I'm gonna, you're gonna read this, so, it's Article 16, entitled Withdrawal of Member-
I'm just gonna make the motion after you say it.
Okay, of the Agreement Regarding the South Central Connecticut Regional Emergency Communications Center, the Town Council, which is the legislative body of the town of North Branford, hereby moves that the town of North Branford withdraw from the system. Period.
You wanna put in an effective date?
Well, no, because the effective date is, I say pursuant to-
Okay.
Section 1, the effective date is going to be the last day of the current fiscal year. All right? So-
So are you saying?
I, I move the motion.
And I'll second the motion, based on what John just explained to us.
We're all gonna go to jail.
But we're gonna be together.
Do we have, do we have discussion, do we have to say anything about alternative services?
Not for this, not for this purpose, you may wanna talk about that afterwards, but it isn't gonna make any, there's a process to withdraw, and that's what you're doing. But let me just make sure that you have, there we have action here on this.
We do, it says discussion and action.
Okay, so you're okay. I'll be leaving very shortly, side door.
All right, well, that was moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fucy. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mike, can you make sure this letter goes out tomorrow, certified return receipt? To whatever, I don't know if it gives an address in there.
Yeah, well, there's one more motion.
Okay, we need another motion.
What are you gonna, if it's delivered by the marshal or somebody?
What's your motion, Mary?
I would make a motion that the Town Council, the Town Manager, and the Fire Chief, the latitude to make a decision in terms of stopgap measure, stopgap.
Pursuant to, you mean the emergency thing?
Yes.
Okay, just refer to ordinance 84-14.
Okay.
Pursuant to 84-14.
Second.
Second.
And that's second by dot.
Now we're really dead.
Most of us all on the side.
Right, and that way there, they'll keep us informed and get it done. So moved by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Fucy, roll call.
He did.
I wrote it down, yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
I know, that's- What's the, what labor project are you talking about?
Item E, lease purchase agreement with municipal leasing consultants.
Every year, the Board of Ed enters into a, the town enters for the Board of Ed, a lease purchase arrangement for them to buy technology. I solicit amongst various banks and institutions that I, that I know, and I have the results of the five respondents on the, on my memo, the greatest amount of buying power as municipal leasing consultants, they have a rate of 1.37 per annum, an annual percentage rate. So my recommendation is that we proceed and enter into the lease agreement for $273,574 net of the fees, at a rate of 1.37, four-year advanced funding lease.
I have a question. Can, is the town in need of any computers to upgrade any of their computers, and can you piggyback on this? Or do you want to?
Well, we had the money in the capital plan you'd given as part of, I think it was like 163, to upgrade our technology. So we should be able to, with that piece, outright buy them, and avoid any interest costs.
Can we get a fifty-dollar Wi-Fi thing for here, so we can have Wi-Fi?
Yes, as part of the 163,000, you're, you're 100% right, we are looking to establish an open Wi-Fi in here as well.
But, but the issue when you buy outright is that, as technology moves forward, then, you know, you don't-
They had the same problem, this is a lease purchase, the same thing would pertain to them.
Yeah, I know, but they, they're constantly updating, because, and we seem to always be many years behind.
Yeah.
So, does that help you at all?
We, we have looked at the possibility of leasing, straight operating leasing versus capital leasing, to accomplish that fact, every three or four years, as you come off lease, get a new piece of equipment, and the cost would be less. We have, we are exploring that, so, I don't care what you're talking about, we are exploring that.
All right. Okay, I'd like to move the motion that the North Branford Town Council adopts the attached resolution and authorizes Mike T. Paulus, Town Manager, and Anthony P. Esposito Jr., CFO, Treasurer, Finance Director, to sign the necessary paperwork to enter into a lease purchase with municipal leasing consultants to acquire $273,574 net of fees of technology for the Board of Education, based on a four-year advanced funding interest rate of 1.37% per annum, subject to the review and approval by the Town Attorney's Office.
Second.
We beat him.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Hodgson, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth? Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Item F, financial report.
Venture report actually remains pretty unremarkable, the top line being the current taxes, again, continue to exceed the prior year, 99.8% of the budget compared to 99.3% previously. Total revenue appears to be down about 1%, but again, the lion's share of that is the delinquent revenue, and that second line down, where we refunded some money to Evergreen Woods. On the expenditure side of the House, again, the phenomenon that Mike has been able to accomplish has been, really been remarkable. We're 87.3% expended this year compared to 87.9, so we actually are under last year's rate, and it's a testimony to all the departments that are actually abiding by Mike spending frees and getting things blessed ahead of time, and only proving what's necessary. So we might, we might salvage the year, which is gonna be remarkable, considering we were back in February, March.
Technology's up, bit.
Yeah, constantly. Twenty-two thousand has actually been spent, about six thousand is tied up in POs, so-
And animal control, we got whacked.
Yeah, that was the change in the philosophy.
Yep.
Public Works, you know, that was the, the winter, no, no real surprise there.
They can't do anything, or say anything about that.
No, Town Attorney, that's always underfunded.
You know, it's interesting, we enter into these regional deals, like we're gonna save money, and, you know, it seems like every time.
Property insurance, yeah.
Uh, I can find out for you, I don't, it's off my head.
Yeah, we're 112% on that.
Right.
I don't know why.
I have a question in regards to next year's budget, the 14-15 budget.
Okay.
The Board of Education approved their budget tonight at their special meeting, but I'm just a little confused as far as the special ed excess cost grant, because I thought during the budget season, when we made our motion, it was that they would get up to a maximum of 270, which was their estimate that they gave us. So, and the reason behind that was that if the excess cost grant, because we know it's a moving target, if it came in less, they would only get up to whatever we got on the grant. But the way their budget numbers were approved tonight, they got the whole 270. So what happens if the excess cost grant is less than the 270? Do they still get 270?
It's an interesting question. I don't have an answer for it off the top of my head. The motion that was passed that night was to increase the budget by 620. The two pieces, 350 plus the 270, so their budget was increased over the prior...
270, right.
Right. So that was the number that was in the budget. So if, it's like any other grant project, I would assume that if you don't get the full amount, you don't spend the full amount. So theoretically, their budget would, instead they got 200 instead of 270, there'd be a $70,000 reduction off their budget, I would assume that they would not spend.
Well, yeah, but the numbers that are in the budget book and what's adopted...
Right.
Is as if they get the whole 270. So their bottom-line number is that 30 point whatever million, when the motion was to increase their budget by $350,000. Because the first motion was to give them the excess cost grant up to a maximum of 270.
Right.
And any, if they incurred expenses and got reimbursed for more than 270, they could come back to the Town Council for the difference.
Correct.
But now, with the motion that they did tonight, they get the whole 270.
That's the motion that the council passed too, though.
They get 270...
Regardless, basically.
Right. And so if it's 100,000, if the excess cost grant is only 100,000...
Right.
They get $170,000 more.
Where does that money come from, then?
We have to give it to them.
Is that...
Well, that's my question.
You've already been, it's already allocated in the budget, factored into the mill rate at that gross number. That was what the motion that the council passed that night was to give them 620 more.
Now, what Rose is saying is if the grant money isn't...
I understand totally, yeah.
Right, so they changed the wording of it.
Are we, are they supposed to come back to the town for the difference if that's the way it's worded?
Once it goes over...
Well, if it's over 270.
If it goes over 270.
But I'm talking about if it's under 270.
So was there a change for the motion from last week to more than me to this week?
No, what she's saying is if it's under 270, we gotta make up the difference.
Was there a change in that motion?
Well, you've already factored it into your budget, though.
Right.
Your budget's already calculated on the $620,000 increase.
I think that the differences were, you know, the accounts that it came out of were, the amounts might have changed a little bit on there. 'Cause Don gave a little presentation tonight and broke it down as far as what the recommendations were from the district.
From the one that they voted down last week to this week?
Right. So I believe the accounts may have changed, like this time, it supplies is 50,000, and I know in last week's budget, supplies was not 50,000. I think it was 28 or something. So I'm assuming that the end number is the same, it's just the category amounts are different.
Wait, what you're saying is that including the 270,000?
Right, right.
How do we come up with that 270?
They gave us an estimate of their excess cost grant based on the current population.
Right.
Because it's a moving target. Because they, you know, so based on who's in there in the outside tuition, who's outplaced right now, and then they may estimate one or two unanticipated that they don't know about. And then you can, you know, that might, that number might go up, it might go down, kids in the program might come out. So that's why it's a moving target, and you don't know what the...
So what we do is actually stipulate the next year's motion, word it differently.
Well, you can't add the 270 into the total amount that you're giving them.
Right.
Right? I mean, I don't know.
That was the motion.
I don't know, I thought that's what we were trying to do with the...
Counselor Caprio moved, seconded by Counselor Fucy, to increase the education by 350, which would be added to the 270 for a total of 620.
Right. I read the motion, yeah.
So that's why they're in 620, you know?
Right.
I know what you're saying, if it doesn't come into full 270, what happens then?
That's the problem.
That's their budget.
Reliant and guess the rest.
Right, okay.
Tax refunds, 9G.
I make a motion to approve the tax refunds as submitted.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Okay, item 10, citizen statements and petitions.
I'd like to say something, just that there's, Friday, June 27, Company 2 is having their annual golf tournament, and it's a great day, a lot of food, a lot of fun, and we should just go out there and support our fire department guys, they support us.
All right, where is it, Ben?
It's at Hunter Golf Course, and then the dinner is at Company 2 afterwards, and it's ribs, steak, clam, steamers, open bar, the whole deal. It's a heck of a time.
What's the date?
Pardon me?
What's the date?
June 27. It's a Friday.
Nice. All right.
I'll make a motion to move into...
I'll wait it.
This does fail on many, Company 3 also, these firemen do what they can to raise money. They're having their pizza, fried dough pizza this Friday night.
This Friday?
Yeah. On Facebook.
They have great pizza, too.
Yeah. Steve Watarino puts it out on Facebook, so again, these guys are jumping through hoops to make money.
Buster, pizza's great.
Yeah. You know, it's good, and...
Yeah, it is good.
So again, these, our firemen give 200% back to this town. You know, that's time away from their families, so we have to appreciate them daily.
Absolutely.
And once you get one call, you know, you had your grandchild, right?
2:00 in the morning.
You can't, and we've all had issues, and you can't, you can't buy that kind of service.
We all agree with you. Thank you, Cliff.
I think the, you know, just celebrating Joanne's contribution to the food bank in town, I mean, the only reason that we can move ahead with something a little bit, little bit more substantial is because of the preparation that we have. I think you should be so proud of yourself.
I mean, think of all the people that she apologized.
Exactly, no.
Spent a lot of hours.
She was my Cub Scout leader, too.
I know.
Oh, so it's your fault.
I had, I had...
The what? Yeah, no, it's just a, just a, you know, good ideas, keep going.
Yeah, great.
Oh, Steve Burden.
I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session, include the town manager and the town attorney. Or do you have something else?
We don't really have.
I think we can dispense, the issue I had in terms of the negotiations isn't, we can kick it till July 8th, and I think John has the same for the RWA on both issues.
Okay.
Can be kicked to July 8th.
Okay.
Then we'll skip the executive.
Then motion to adjourn.
Second.
Third.
Long favor.
Bye.